Let's get started. I'm just hearing your door opening.
Give me a moment. I have a bowl full of food, can I just pray?
If he runs up the stairs quick enough, he'll get here before you.
Okay, so you just sent me something today, huh?
Yes, sir.
Oh.
Are the mics on?
It's not under camera packages, is it?
No, I just sent an email out to your email address.
Is it green?
I don't know.
Yeah, it looks like it is.
Oh, bottom button.
Yeah, you heard that.
Gotcha.
Hey.
We're good.
Yeah, I was saying, let's go here.
I just uploaded the activity of things to your schedule.
Oh, did you? Great, thank you. Okay, well, then we'll call the meeting to order then. Counselor Barnes, would you like to open the word of prayer for us?
Sure. Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for the opportunity that we have to be here as servants to our community. We're grateful for the blessing and opportunity it is to serve. And pray as we meet together tonight, the Spirit will be with us, and the things that are said in that will be in accordance with thy mind and will. We're grateful for this wonderful community that we live in. And we pray for thy Spirit to be with us now in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Counselor Barnes. Any additions to the agenda? And if not, get a motion to adopt it?
I will move to adopt the agenda.
Thank you. Do any of them? Yeah, all in favor? Okay, everyone had a chance to read the minutes from last meeting? And if all is right there?
I just would like to ask Jeff, there are a few points there that are in the minutes, and I'm not so sure what the decision has been on them. There are two or three points, maybe we can look at them later on.
Yeah, if you'd like.
Which, under which items in the minutes you're there, you know?
2B4.
4. Okay, if you give me a second, I'll just ask you. Okay, if it does go down.
Pardon me for a second. Jeff, what did you call the file you sent me because I can't see it here in my Hotmail?
Open up the thing.
Did you put it in the Dropbox?
No, I just sent you an email.
Did you email it to his Hotmail or his?
His Hotmail.
Well, it's not here, though.
I don't know if this one's a little too hot now. This one's.
Okay. There were a few items there that I don't know what happened. The withdrawal of the membership from that, I know we will have that. That is something I was wondering, are we going to have anyone address the Badlands? Is somebody coming from there? Do we know? We were supposed to have Mayor Barney come do a presentation.
I haven't set anything up like that, no. So, I mean, we want to discuss. We can.
And there was Alberta Southwest somewhere for the future. I mean, maybe it could be for next council. It does not need to be today. But we had mentioned those things, and I wondered if we had some action coming out of there.
We can maybe discuss that.
Okay.
Was there anything else that's?
No, I think it's fine. We can carry on.
All right. Can we get a motion for the adoption of the minutes then?
I will.
Okay. Counselor Bill, all in favor? I don't believe we have any delegations to deal with today. Six business arising from the minutes. Yeah, Mayor Corrigan had mentioned the issue as far as getting somebody in from the
Badlands. Badlands, yeah.
Was there anything else that anybody?
Well, just, we had the talk that Jeff Haggy is no longer our South Grove delegate. I answered some questions for one of the potential candidates. I had a nice talk with Mike Parker about that. He seems very interested, so just kind of to report on that, if his name's on that list, so.
That's for the act there. That was something also that you were going to deal with.
Yeah. He had a lot of good questions, so.
Okay. Let's jump right down then to new business. Finance and administration was putting together a draft policy, which you will find in 7A1.
I would like to make a recommendation to council to adopt that policy.
Everybody's had a chance to review that?
I think it's what we tend.
I think it's what we intended.
Just a question, is it based on like other municipalities in the area or?
It's essentially based on the government policy.
Right.
And then I had sent many in different towns policies that I had found around, and so, yes, it's mimicking.
Yeah, well, that's great. I just, my one observation was based on this, I mean, the flag would rarely fly at half mast.
That's correct.
It will have to be within the parameters.
Hopefully.
Yeah, with, yeah, that's right. With the caveat that down here it did say that council, you know, resolution of council has the privilege, right?
Right. No, I didn't have a question about the Remembrance Day. Typically, typically, it remembers they bring it down to half mast, and they have their minute of silence, and then they raise it back up again. And in here, it says something about leaving it down, if I can find it.
It's in the very bottom there, November 11th.
Yeah. Let me see, it says, okay, yeah, it says half mast to occur from 11:00 AM to sunset. Now, I don't, it doesn't seem to me that that's what they do on Remembrance Day. I've never seen it done that way. They basically, the program, they bring it half mast, you know, they play the taps, and then they have the minute of silence, and then they raise it back up again.
I think what they're trying to talk about this one, we indulge, as we are now, the one outside would stay down until sunset on the front of the museum. That's the belief I have. That is a proper protocol from the government.
It is, it is. It is supposed to go from.
Yeah, we might not have done it quite right.
Okay, well, I was going to say, in the past, in the past, we have the service out here, they need to bring it down.
Yes, you're right. But proper protocol, according to the.
Okay, and that's good. I'm glad we got that fixed.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion, make a recommendation to council to adopt this. All in favor?
Great.
Thank you for the administration, to the administration for having done a one-page.
So, 7B, there was some question that was brought up last council meeting in regards to snow removal. And so, perhaps maybe we can get Jeff to talk a little bit to this particular one?
Sure. Am I okay to be here? Do you want me to be there? We're okay here. Do we have a large version of that we can put up or?
The map.
No, I don't.
Just do it right there.
Okay. Yeah, just on your device there.
On your device.
So, the snow removal policy is just the map. There's no verbiage attached to it. It's simply laying out the priorities, and council has the opportunity to review those priorities, question those, and amend those as it is required. I don't think I've heard any concern about necessarily the priorities of snow removal, but perhaps a couple of practices of snow removal, so I wanted to address those very briefly. One of the concerns that was brought up was notification to residents about when we would be doing their streets and roads, so that if they need to move vehicles or things like that, that they have ample opportunity. We've tried to address that in two ways. We haven't done one very well. But we have some signage to give notice to people. It will be on their street the next day. And then we've also been plowing to the center, so that we're not putting an iceberg around their vehicle. The problem and the only caution we've had and the concern we've had with using the signage is we get snowstorms where we think we'll be there the next day, and then the wind comes up, and we don't get there the next day. And this last major snowfall, not just the last two days, but the one before, was an example of that, where we got a lot of snow. The guys started on all the priority ones, and then the wind blew like crazy, and they spent the whole next day on priority ones. And so, we were trying to juggle that if we would have put all those signs out, all those people potentially maybe would have moved vehicles or done all this, and then we wouldn't have been there. We would have been there the following day, or in the middle of the night that night, potentially, is when we would have been there because we were running 24 hours at that point in time. So, we have some signage that we can do. And where we think it's going to be a good indication of when we'll be there, we'll make a better attempt at using that signage. We just want to caution council a little. There's almost a little more public relations damage in putting the signs up than not showing up.
What do the signs say?
They just say, we'll be cleaning the street tomorrow. We'll be doing snow removal on the street tomorrow.
Could you put a disclaimer on it? Say, hey, fall is well, and the weather cooperates, we will be here. I mean, I'm serious.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, yeah.
It's not a laughing matter, really, because sometimes you have to spell things out a little bit to make people realize that this isn't written in stone. We'll try to do our best. You know, I mean, I've been living here now for 42 years. I've never once got a notification that the snow is going to be removed on a certain day, nor I even worried about it. It happens when it happens, but I realize that there are people out there that really need to know or want to know for some reason, right? And, but if you're going to put a sign out, I think you better have a disclaimer on that. That's my feeling.
I think that bears back to the reason why they've been reluctant to put those signs up. They've had them for a while. This isn't something new. They just picked up. They've had the signs for a while.
A thought, Jeff, I know the town has set up a system for making, you know, some mass phone calls from time to time if necessary. Would that be a possibility? I mean, lots of times, people won't see signs anyway, but if they had just a phone call notification, would that be something that could be put into the system?
The only difficulty is we can't say, call everyone on Second Avenue.
You, oh, okay.
We can say, call everyone that's 653-something.
Okay, you.
Someone has cell phone.
So, you basically set up the system for a mass call for the whole town. You can't?
That's the way the whole thing.
You can't narrow it down?
I don't know.
Okay.
Not by specific blocks and streets.
Okay, that was just my question.
I mean, not to say that the message could be something relatively generic, like, over the next few days, we'll be doing this, and even though we're probably not going to plow in your car, if you want to move it, go ahead. Like, I'm not sure what the town is thinking. That's the other thing we're struggling with a little bit. When it goes to the middle, we haven't found instances where we're plowing in people. We're not hearing from them if we are.
They may not get the snow plowed from around their car because the car is there.
Right, because they're parked there, yeah, yeah.
But the snow is not being piled up any further around it.
I've had a lot of people contact me and said that they really like what we're doing now. I haven't had one complaint from anybody that I've talked to about the new way of piling in the middle because at least now they could go down the street one way or the other. It's not such a big inconvenience if you have to go up the other side and go down to the end and then come back down. You know, I mean, I think people, I think most people are good about it. They have common sense. I think the town's trying to do its best, and this is a better way than they've done it in years. Counselor Binger, you had one.
Yeah, a couple of things, Jeff. I noticed you got a priority one on 10th Avenue and Highway 5 West. It's just a, just a little. What is that?
Church.
Church.
Is that the church?
There's a school division maintenance there. There's the State Center, and that's the service road in front of Deans and Mikes and
West of the State.
Tourists and all those guys. That service road is what it is.
Between the. Could you move that to a different priority?
That's.
Now, the reason why I'm suggesting that is because I noticed on the east, on Third and Fourth Avenues, they're a totally different priority, and we have a lot of school buses coming in off of the east bypass going towards the junior high and the elementary school up there in the nursing home. And so, they come off the bypass onto Third and Fourth Avenue, or Third and Second Avenue, Second and Third Avenue, I'm sorry. Could we move that priority to a little bit like a second or a first priority?
Well, the junior high and that whole area is already a second.
It's in green.
Or, sorry.
It's in green, yes.
Second, Third Avenue is not a second priority because it would be Fifth Avenue is where the junior high is.
Okay. And they're on a, they're on a second priority?
They're on a second, and so is all of Second Street because of the bus route. That's true.
But the, okay, if you look at those road that cross Fifth, you have Third, Fourth, you have Fifth in green, right? Fifth is the second priority. But Fourth, where there is quite a few buses coming through, and they're coming through there also.
So, Fifth from Main Street to this, all the way to the bypass is the second priority?
Yes, but I'm looking perpendicular to that, the avenues, where the streets.
Fourth Street is the second priority, yeah.
Okay, so the one in green, that's a second priority? So, before that, it's Third. Okay, yes, I get you. Thank you. I'm not reading the map correctly. I think that covers it properly from what I can see, unless you heard some specific complaints, but.
It's certainly not a perfect sign.
I haven't, I haven't heard people complain to the point where I think we need to change anything at this point.
Lee Crest is covered with Ninth Avenue with a priority one?
Yeah, and this may be, I'm trying to remember if, and one of you councils may remember. I don't think we discussed this last winter, but we do do that as a priority one now because we have the elementary school and the Lee Crest and everything up there. So, we're probably intentionally doing that a little higher priority than even what portion of that may be listed, just since the school decamp up there.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I mean, he actually did mention that last.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, everybody good with that? We can move on?
Just the thought that, you know, we've talked about maybe some kind of a Facebook snow removal kind of announcement option. I don't know, you know, there are some people that, you know, if we just told them, hey, the up-to-date snow removal stuff can be found at, and if there was just a little website that showed this is where they are, this is where they're going, I don't know, just like a GPS tracker on the truck, and then we'd say, hey, they're on Third right now. They're coming up. They should be here in an hour. Yay. And then it just, I mean, even if it only looks like we're making an effort. But I think that an online, like a flash program or something, shouldn't be that hard to design over this map where like GPS can just draw where they've been, what they're working on, where they're going.
I mean, is that going to really add a lot to administration?
Well, I'm just thinking, once it's in place, if the truck driver just every hour or two logs on and just says, okay, here I am, boom, and then based on this map, people can see, oh, okay.
Jeff, can I ask you something? Is that map on a website?
No.
Wouldn't we want to have it on a website?
Certainly, yeah.
It might help people understand where their priorities are. And, yeah, it might bring them to question that, quite possibly. But it also could instruct them.
That's a great idea.
I think it would be good.
I don't think there's any reason to keep it from them, so.
Well, they give them more of a chance to look, like Mayor said.
There could be a little bit of an explanation. Priorities are set up
For these reasons.
For this reason, and to also explain to them that we try to get to priority four and five as quick as we can according to the manpower that is available, which is not always there when we want it. I mean, it's one thing to get the trucks, but if you don't have trucks available in town to put the snow, then you have difficulty removing the snow. What do you do, right? You have to wait.
Counselor Binger?
I have no problem with putting this on our webpage. That's an excellent suggestion. What I'm going to suggest, though, when they're plowing the roads to the center, Jeff, can we ask them to stop at the beginning of the intersection and not plow through the intersection so a person doesn't have to go around the intersection to get back going the other way?
We don't have to go all the way down to the end.
Oh, you're saying so they don't go right into the, to the streets, so they're back about 20 minutes?
Right into the intersection, yeah.
Yeah.
Keep it back away from the, away from the intersection.
Because it's a danger thing.
It is.
Safety factor.
I get your talk to them. I want to, I'm going to put myself out there just a little bit. If there's no concerns with the policy, I don't want to get council too wrapped up in exactly how far every foot of every block you plow the snow. I want to be a little bit cautious about that.
That's not every foot and every, and every.
I know, I know.
That is a definite, we want it to end at the beginning of that intersection, not at the end of the intersection.
And I'm with you, but at the cost of not plowing the intersection?
Oh, no, they'll plow the intersection when they're, when they're.
Piling back where they're away from the intersection.
Yeah.
I mean.
But you see, what's happening now is you're coming up to an intersection, and then you have to go all the way around to the end of the intersection to come back the other way.
You have to go onto the other street.
Exactly, and if you come up on that plow line in that center, then you have to go around the corner, down to the end of the plow line, and then back the other way.
Well, I know it's a little bit inconvenient, but you know, it's a little bit of inconvenience, but I can tell you.
It's a danger inconvenience, Mayor. It is not just a little bit of an inconvenience. It's a dangerous inconvenience.
Why do you call it dangerous?
Because if you're turning on that intersection and somebody's coming through
Can't stop.
and can't stop, you're going to have an accident.
I saw an accident today right out here, just up this corner up here today. A girl couldn't stop in the corner, and she came right through and T-boned another car. And that's a prime example. Kid coming out of high school, just barely got out of school, come out there, and she just looked sick. Couldn't stop.
Jeff?
I just, I need to ask a few questions here because I've had, I need to know, each council's given a couple of suggestions. I need a little bit of collective guidance here.
Can I just throw one thing in here?
Sure, why not?
If we do put this on the website, I think this is a perfect opportunity to maybe explain the scenario with the what-if scenario. If it does blow, your priority may get changed.
That's right.
Well, it's not your priority gets changed.
Yeah, no, no.
It just gets delayed before.
It just gets put back a little bit, and that'd be, rather than have to worry about the signs, you put it right on there and just explain to them
It's the disclaimer.
That, you know, that disclaimer is right there because we're doing our very best, but sometimes it's out of our control. When the weather gets nasty, the wind blows, that kind of puts the schedule back. And that's a perfect opportunity to put it in there while you're explaining the legend of this.
So, do we have a consensus to have this put onto the map, put onto the Facebook page on our webpage?
I think so.
And add a little bit of a disclaimer to it?
We could, if we, with that disclaimer, if we give them a thing that says, if you have any questions or concerns about this, and then directly give them like a place where they can report, and then we can take that data. We can say, you know what, we're always hearing that this, this, and this is a problem. Then we can suggest to the boys, because I would hate to sit here and suggest to them a better way of doing things when we're not even sure what the majority of the complaints really are or where they're focused. So, I'm inclined to let them continue doing what they're doing until we get a list of problem areas, you know, of reports of problems. But like I say, but this intersection thing, I mean, it sounds like we may well need to.
Let's deal with one thing at a time here, okay? So that when we're giving direction to administration, they know what we're telling them to do.
Right, sure.
So, we have a consensus then to have the notice, put the map with a disclaimer put up on our webpage so that we have internet access and that information is distributed?
Okay. Things like call-out system, GPS tracking, aggregating info on complaints, which is fine. That can be a byproduct of this other thing. So, it was those two other things. It was brought up about calling out the signage and any kind of tracking type of system.
Okay, so I think, I think we addressed already that we can't practically do a call-out system.
Yeah, those were just ideas.
Those were just ideas.
And the signage may be.
And the signage may not be as big of an issue with anything else. So, I would suggest maybe.
And we will work, possibly, we have the signs, right?
Right.
If it makes sense, we're in a good groove, and we know where we're going to be, great. It's not a problem.
In fact, that's what you do now, right? So, I would suggest that we just
Leave it up to.
Leave that as it is and how they're doing it. I do have, I think Counselor Binger brings up an interesting point and a concern as far as the safety issue goes. I don't, I don't know that we want to get too involved, like Counselor Puebe's mentioned, in telling them how to do it, but there is maybe just a reminder that safety is an issue would be.
Yeah.
I just have a note here. I'll ask what those logistics are and how and why it is, how, I just don't know for sure. So, if it's just simply because they were moving on, and that's the answer, well, it's pretty easy to remedy.
Yeah.
Well, today, today I'm going to tell you the reason that question is because today on the prolongation of Third Street East and Fifth Avenue, so they're going up, it's an intersection that's quite dangerous right there.
Where the flashing light is.
No, well, yeah. And they took, they had the blower and blew straight across the intersection. So, that didn't blow on the intersection. They blew straight across in the center of the road. So, this is why I don't know where it happened, what you're describing, because I didn't see it on our side.
What I'm describing is, Mayor, is because I spent all day in Lethbridge, and I see how Lethbridge does their streets, and they do it exactly like we do it. But they end at the intersection. They do not plow that center bead through the intersection. They ended at the intersection, so you've got a clear vision which way you're turning.
Exactly.
You know?
Lethbridge plows their streets?
Yes.
Well, they got a blower like.
All right, thank you. That's.
One other thing.
Counselor Binger, something?
One other thing, after being in Calgary for two major snowstorms, we have nothing to complain about the snow removal in our town.
Thank you.
And I'll tell you, I was watching the news the other night, and they just made their announcement that they're spending another extra $7 million, so.
$200,000 dollars a day in some areas.
So, I really appreciate what they are doing for us. I really feel there is a level of satisfaction that's fairly high regardless, no removal. Not perfect, we know that, but quite satisfied.
So, let's move on to 7D then. And this comes from a couple of questions that we had last council meeting in regards to what we're doing for tourism. And so, Jeff's throwing together a little PowerPoint for us.
Do you want to explain why you skipped C real quick?
Because it's not on my. How's that?
There's a logical reason when you see what it is.
C is the big one, Dave.
Mr. Chairman, I called you. It's pretty late. I come across the house right on the highway coming home, and I had to stay.
Did you call in?
Yes.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, let me give just a one minute on what 7C was going to be. As you saw in your agenda, it was a gymnastics agreement. And they have not met to give me feedback on that yet, so I didn't bring the draft to council. They were supposed to have met by the meeting, and then they emailed me yesterday and said they were going to meet for next week. So, I'll bring that back to maybe the next council meeting, or the second one in January, perhaps.
Is that C?
You deleted that awfully quick. Well, I didn't mean, I didn't take it off again.
It's not on my, it's not even on my SkyDrive anymore.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Although it never was on there. I was going to bring it to the meeting.
Okay.
There wasn't, I didn't have the attachment in the package.
Right, just on the, yeah.
Yes, I just had it in the background, or I was going to bring the paper. Okay, yeah, I was thinking, oh, man, what did I delete? So, what gymnastics is wanting is a, is a set annual agreement for their use of the facility, and also some parameters on when they can. And also some parameters on when they can be in here and what events they have to take down for. We make them set up and take down quite a lot, and it's costly and frustrating for them. So they wanted to get a lot of stuff on paper. So we have a draft that I'd hoped they had given me feedback on by the meeting, but they're not meeting this week, so it will be next week. And I'll bring that to you.
Thanks, Jeff.
So what I wanted to do is just take five minutes. Last meeting, there was some discussion about the tourism initiatives, and Mayor Crona mentioned tonight how we need to have some discussion about the Badlands, number of Southwest, and a number of those groups. So Marion asked if I put together just a brief summary of the things done in 2013 and maybe preface some further discussion on tourism partnerships. So you should all have it on your devices. I'll have it up there as well. And this is a summary. It's not an exhaustive list of every line item spent on tourism marketing, but it's some of the bigger partnerships or the bigger initiatives that we spend money on. And I'll talk about, I'll kinda, a little more detail in the five different areas. I'll talk about the Mormon Trail and what we did with that group this year. Now, remember, we're one of four communities in that group, so we spend equally with the other communities on that. We'll talk about Water and Glacier Relay, the Theater, Chinook Country, and some efforts in the Flathead Valley generally, and I'll get the specifics on that. So with the Mormon Trail, we did just some very grassroots brochures this year. One was an events guide, and one was a driving guide for the communities. And we distributed those, tried to keep it quite close regionally. Those who could make a Sunday afternoon drive out of it, or a rainy day in Waterton Drive, actually, was really one of the pieces we keyed in on. Or a very windy day in Waterton Drive, something like that. So we distributed through Waterton, Crow's Nest Pass, Lethbridge, and Caninasus, and also Chinook Country, took about 500 toll there outlets that they service as well. Now, we did this in a bit of a partnership with Waterton. Waterton Guide that they put out every year has always been exclusively Waterton Chamber businesses. For years, that's how it's always been, and they agreed to allow us to buy a Chamber membership this year. And we put an advertisement in their guide that essentially said, you know, talked briefly about the Mormon Trail, that they could pick up brochures for more information at some specific outlets in Waterton. And so then we had agreements with The Lodge, Crandall, and the Water Natural History Association on Main Street. They're place brochures there, that would drive, the ad would drive traffic into their businesses in order to pick up the brochures. So that seemed to work fairly well. We didn't distribute as many as I would have liked, but we did have to refill everybody once, so that was a good thing. And that's how that worked. We're happy to be involved with Waterton this year, we are again in this upcoming year. They've agreed to do the same thing with us again. And the rest, again, we sent through Caninasus and Crow's Nest Pass area. We attended two trade shows, Lethbridge and the Crow's Nest Pass. And the thing about these two shows that I liked is they were manned by the tourism operators within the Mormon Trail area. So I've really been pushing to try and get the notion out of the hands of the offices of every town hall and into the operators, and that they're the face of the brand. And so that was a good thing we had. I know, like our Historical Society did, a lot of, spent a lot of time with the shows, manning the booths and did a great job with that. And then through Raymond McGrath and Sterling. Sterling did a great job, their Historical Society and their Mickelson Farms and some of their groups did a great job manning the booths as well. We created the Mormon Trail Facebook and Pinterest pages this year, and we've continued to maintain the Mormon Trail website. We're having, we're finding that this, this group that has interest in the history and the types of things that the Mormon Trail can offer is a social media heavy group. That's where they like their information. And so we're trying to do more there, but these were just created and they need a little bit more work. They need a little bit more full-time attention. What we're thinking of doing between the four communities is finding that stay-at-home mom who's keen on social media outlets, who we can pay a little bit every year to rattle all the town's chains once a month for new information and keep everything populated and fresh, and respond to all the questions. And I think that could be kind of a neat work-from-home type of a project that we can do with somebody. So that's what we're gonna look to do there in 2014. We advertised with the Mormon Trail on what's called the Milepost. I guess I'm not keeping up with my, there we go. The Milepost is a, they call it the Alaska Trail Bible, and it's about as thick as the good old King James Version as well. And it is basically from Florida to Alaska, all the little towns and points of interest and things to stop and do along the way. And so this year, we put in an ad with them. Now, you put your ad in in August, it'll be released next month. So you're always kind of a year ahead of the game. And so we'll monitor the success of that in 2014 to see how our campgrounds, basically is what it's gonna be, is see how the campgrounds, if they see an uptick of the Alaska Trail travel. And so that's not one we can monitor too much this year because it only comes out this next month. And we'll see how that goes. The Milepost is also doing a tablet version, which we think will be very beneficial to. We advertise with the Cowboy Trail and the K Country Guides, that's Caninasus Country. Again, just because of regional proximity. We understand in this specialty, and I don't mean this to be negative, but with McGrath and Raymond and to appoint Sterling, they don't have anything that's going to bring anybody in from a long distance outlet. And they understand that, they just don't have tourism infrastructure. And so they can't expect someone to pack up the kids down in Arizona and come up to McGrath. Unless there's family there, unless there's a friends and family connection. Even Carstens, we don't have, we're not a destination. We're a touring stop, we're a great little Sunday drive, we're a stop along the way to the Stampede, we're a stop along the way to Banff, we're a stop along the way to Jasper. But we're not a destination. And again, I don't mean that to be negative, it's just we are what we are. And once we understand that, we can accommodate better. So we've been looking at these regional successful areas, and so we advertise with them. And then I mentioned the water partnership. So that was the Mormon Trail in a real nutshell. The next is some other things, Water and Glacier Relay. Water and Glacier Relay, in my opinion, is an example of an event gone right. It's a private group who decided to host an event. They came to the town council about three years ago. Town council awarded them some opportunities initiative funding to help kickstart the marketing. They asked me at the town to do the marketing on their behalf, so we never actually cut them a check. I just take money out of Opportunities Initiative and then put it in tourism, so it's allocated properly. And they've basically hit their capacity in their three years, they're trying to continue to grow it. We started, we've done most of all the attractions for that event through Facebook. They've got over 1,500 fans on that page. They can announce the next date or the next year, those 1,500 people will run away and they'll be able to register. And you know, they're hitting their 40-team cap. They were 33, 34, 35 last year, something like that. You know, inside of their, that was their third year. So that's an event that's not being driven out of the town office. It's a private family who, we didn't even spend, out of what they were entitled to for Opportunities Initiative this year, I don't think we spent half. We did some Facebook advertising and that was about it.
They're extremely well organized.
Yep, they're doing very well, they've got the whole family, the whole Pillar family's behind it. The kids all come up from Utah, and they've got volunteers. They actually have volunteers from out of town that just come to volunteer to help every year now for the event because it's an enjoyable day for them.
Do they stay in our motels and eat in our restaurants?
So it's a short event, that's the one thing about it. It's a one-day, 24-hour event. But they start at about 2:00 in the morning on the one night. So people usually come in the day before, they stay here, they do some opening ceremonies, the teams all have to register the day before, and then the next day they all start running. And then they end in East Glacier. Some of those teams come back, some stay in East Glacier. So I don't know, I guess Council Peabody could probably speak to the impact of the motel, I don't know for sure. It's great, we officially host the office here in Carstens down on Main Street. They run right past, it's a hub. They sometimes stop in for snacks or water or whatever, and then they go. Mostly their teams stay at the hotel, so their support team, so the families that's not running, that's following in the band and stuff. That's good, we love the activity.
I'm just wondering if we could give it even more visibility by even having an official from the town, it could be me, to start their ceremony or welcome them, or kickstart them, whichever. I really think it would be a nice opportunity to show, showcase something gone right as a partnership.
Yep, I'll mention that. They are looking at expanding, doing a second race every year now too. They're looking to do a Carstens to Waterton because there's some hotels in Waterton, Locky Graves Group would like to, excuse me, have a race where they end in Waterton, do a big party, and then everyone stays in Waterton. That night they'd stay in Harrison the one night and go to Waterton the next day. So they're working on that right now, looking at expanding it. For those that don't wanna do the 100 miles, they can do the shorter, shorter distance to Waterton.
I mean, even hosting might cost as much.
If we incorporate a welcome by an official of the town, are we gonna give them a little town package? Such as brochures, pens, pins, whatever?
They'd be open to all that, and I can talk with Ted. They have a registration package, a welcome package they get, so yeah, we can have that conversation.
If we could add that in, it would be, you know, history of Carstens and all that kinda stuff, it's good for business.
Or even the ring, you know, the ring that they're propped at the Remington Center?
I put the Facebook page up there, just if you ever wanna have a look at it, I have the link. But that's another example of a Facebook page that worked well. So we set it up, populated quickly, and now it just, it perpetually maintains itself. Like every team posting all their pictures and videos and all their comments, and now it's just this little community. And I mean, so much as they're doing Merry Christmases and Happy New Years to everyone at the end of the year, and you know, it's a little community that everyone's asking, "When's the next, when's the date? When's the date?" "Oh, here it is, and here we go, and I need another person, and we need two more." So it's something that worked very well, and if we can find a way to pattern other events. I'm not taking credit for this event at all, we helped market it, but it really took off, and it's done well.
I think it would be nice if we even had Ted kinda do a little bit of synopsis of how he organized this event, like a template type of thing.
Potentially, yeah.
Because it could be something we could duplicate with other kind of events. I mean, if he's willing to.
You know, I look at all these relays that are happening, and more and more communities are having them. And this, I think, is a great tourism thing for our community, I mean, this is a good beginning. We could do others, like you said with the Waterton thing, but there could be others too that we could partner up with.
The Mormon Marathon, or Sterling.
Yeah, I mean, there's lots of potential, which helps to promote our community and brings in economic viability to our community, it really helps. And I like the idea of Council Bangery saying, "We do a little packet up and give them a packet to welcome them to our community", and have somebody like the mayor, or the deputy mayor, or whoever, representing the town, welcome them to town. And the thing, I think, eventually what happens is people get to know the community that are doing the hosting, and then they wanna come back at other times during the year too.
Well, some are just...
I think it's a good thing.
In that package too, I would suggest that we give discounts for camping fees and stuff like that.
Oh, there's all kinds of things.
That way they want to stay right here.
Yeah.
I'll work with them on this off-season. Our next one, and this is a friendly-minded thing we've done for a few years, the theater has a great database of customers. And they mail them out physically their program every year, they find for their demographic, that's the most effective way to connect with those folks. So we've been partnering with them now. We actually bumped this up last year quite a bit to help them cover all the costs of the mailing to that data, that client base, I think that's working well. But when I saw this, Jeff, I was thinking, you know, if we're spending this money to do these mailouts, which is great, I wondered if we couldn't include an insert, wouldn't cost that much more. Oh, we do? Yeah, we do. Get a couple more events out to the, okay, well, that's great. Yeah, we put some stuff of ours in as well. Awesome. We put it right to the point where we jump to the next postage level. So we put as much in it as we can. Yeah, that's for sure.
Yeah, I just had a couple of comments, it's kinda safe until the end. But they can relate to what we've talked about, like back to the Mormon Trail. I've wondered from time to time if there would be anyone interested, you know, in the Mormon Trail and setting up a series of Mormon Trail geocache sites. I have a, my daughter's father-in-law, he's very into it, and you know, just talking to him, I guess there's quite a niche market there for geocaching. And the people that are into it really will go great distances, especially when there's a series of geocaches.
Sterling does it every year and it's become quite successful. It's not a Mormon Trail themed one, but they have a geocache event every year. We've talked about that, it'd be awesome.
It would be, most people are aware, we actually have quite a few geocaches here in town.
Yeah, we do, you know, like I say, this, my daughter's father-in-law, he hits them all when he comes up, but you know, but he just talks about areas where there are a themed, a themed series of geocaches. And I think the Mormon Trail would be very, lend itself to something like that.
That would be fantastic, let's talk about that a bit. I should mention, the Mormon Trail, and you'll hear about it as a council one, it's been the desire of the other communities particularly because tourism marketing is something new to particularly Raymond McGrath. They'd like to formalize the Mormon Trail group, if there's a better word, a little more. And they like council representation at that table. So that's going to be, Scott Ward is writing the terms of reference for it. McGrath's already assigned a counselor to the board that doesn't exist, but they're happy. And they're anxious, Brenda Beck, Council Beck, who'll be excellent, by the way, is volunteered to be on that. So you'll see a little bit more about that because they'd like to formalize it and have some political involvement there. So we'll talk about that more probably. It's going to the mayor's sales meeting in February, Mayor, is where it's gonna come up.
Now, one other item I was gonna ask you, it's not necessarily related, but your last was the community theater database, or the theater database that you mail out to. What I was gonna ask is if they have a database from the campground, because we have a lot of people in the campground, if we could use, if they have a database of people, could get a mail-out as well?
They do, to answer your question, yes. I haven't tried to exploit that mailing list to send stuff out to, but I guess it's certainly possible, yeah. They have, they've gone, obviously since Nets were there, it's now a computerized booking system, so they would have that information now. And that's one way we could help track that Alaskan Trail visitation as well, is where these folks are from.
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah, great. I've participated in Chinook Country with the full-page ad, we do that every year. Chinook Country's changed their, their model of how they perform. They're no longer a membership-based group, but it's by the service that you purchase from them. So we'll, at this point in time, continue to do that. And the Flathead Valley is an area that, I guess I've just been working with the folks in the Flathead Beacon, and Council Peabody from work can talk about this too, because we've partnered on a couple of things. We're finding that we're getting a lot of interest from the Flathead Valley and what goes on in Carstens, and there's two reasons for that. One is proximity, but two is half the people down there are from here. And literally, if ever that's the case. It might be half, I don't know what the number is, but it's a huge number of the people traveling from the Crow's Nest Pass to Calgary to Medicine Hat and everywhere in between. And we travel through Coots, Delbonita, Carway, Eureka, Roosevelt, is where they're going through. So about four years ago, five, yeah, four years ago, pre-Mormon Trail, the town of Carstens did some advertising in the Flathead Beacon. We just did a weekly advert from May to September. And then after that, we started doing a couple of things with the Mormon Trail. And we'll do a couple advertisements with the Flathead Beacon now, but the Beacon has gone out and has been purchasing other publications in the Flathead Valley. So this year, we did a couple of things with them. We did the Northwest Montana Fair Guide, so they hold the fair in the valley there. And it's the week before the Mini Chucks here. So we took an ad and advertised the Mini Chucks because obviously you even have the right group of people in the Flathead Valley that are at a western-themed fair, would have interest in your Mini Chucks. So we worked with them there. We partnered with, well, actually, Council Peabody, not with his council hat on, obviously his work hat, got six businesses together and advertised with the Montana Senior News last year. We're doing that again right now, we're just in the middle of doing that again. So as a town, I partner with them and help offset the cost of that ad.
Can we know, was that successful? Do you have a way of knowing if it was successful?
We did a coupon initiative, so that the people who read it would bring the coupons in.
Right.
And the first time, just with any print marketing, right? You're just getting awareness, we saw a few coupons, not a ton. But we were gearing up for this upcoming season. So now that winter's done, we're getting back in there to show recognition. And then the ones that will really matter is the ad will run in, you know, April, May to prepare for the summer. And then we'll see how many coupons blow in, so. So the other one we did, I didn't mention on there, but it was a neat little publication, is the Flathead Beacon put out a cross-border shopping guide, and it was specifically targeted to Canadians in the Flathead Valley. And so they put them in the power centers in the shops where the Canadians shop. And it was basically how you get stuff back across the border, was essentially what it was. So as much as I struggle because I don't like to see a whole bunch of leakage down to US retail, for those in the Crow's Nest Pass, Lethbridge, Medicine Hat, all around us, they're using them too. So we did an ad with them, we did that twice this year, they did two runs of that, and we'll probably do that one again. But in this upcoming year, I'd like to see some of our private tourism-related businesses have a tracking device and a coupon of some kind, some way that we can track the success of that. So I think it's a good area to be. the success of that. So I think it's a good area to be. You know, we have a lot of people who we know travel, and we know they're from a close proximity, and so we're still kind of focusing on that in the Flathead Valley. So, I've been a lot more than five minutes. Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Results, as I looked at the end of the year and looked at all the things we can look at for indicators, the Mormon Trail group has continued to formalize. The Mormon Trail web traffic was down this year, but stable. The Mormon Trail social media presence and fans are up dramatically. Tourism-related Town of Carstens pages are well-visited, and I'm going to talk about that in just a second a little more. The operators are beginning to get engaged in our promotion, which is where it has to go. If it never leaves the town office and never grabs with the operators, we'll just kill it. We're just not going to flog that horse on and on if the operators aren't going to pick up on it. Valuable partnerships were formed with Waterton. Tourist information center numbers continue to soften. We had a resurgence in 2010 of 6,124 visitors. There were 4,281 last year, 2013. The peak since we began recording it was in 2002 with 8,876. I don't get too alarmed about that, as much as I'd love to see it the other way. It's not unusual for any drive-in tourist information center in North America. That is simply the trend of drive-in information centers.
Is that largely based on technology?
Yeah, it's simply based on that we have free Wi-Fi in the entire parking lot, so they can sit there with their tablet and get everything they need. And unless they need the washroom, they don't have to go in. You know, it's really a lot of that. The people will literally pull into the parking lot and get what they need on their smartphone, because we offer free Wi-Fi there, and then move on.
So what we need to make sure we have is a digital solution for, had they not walked in there, you know, they can get some guidance on their device.
And that's why with the wireless, which is off right now, but we had some little abuse of it, the wireless at both the library and the information center, when you go on your landing page is the town visitation visitor page. So we can manage the landing page when you go. So we see those numbers soften. They're still decent numbers for being open 15 weeks, when you break down how many visitors a day. It's still good. We see the phone, which isn't measured here. Phone inquiries are actually quite high. They're probably more than the walk-ins. But then I also want to show on the town website why I'm not hitting any alarms about the visitor information center numbers, because we're seeing our visitation, our visitation-related pages on the website, just, the use is just skyrocketing. It's really going up. Couple general numbers. Overall visits to the site from 2012 to 13 is up 41% on the town website. Yeah, Graham, go easy, don't let your head swell too much. Overall page views, so...
That's just me looking for four numbers.
Yeah, they're up nineteen and a half percent. And visit duration is up 6.7. I like that number. I'm a fan of the visit duration. It shows you how much time people spend on your site. And you notice right away, you'll have pages where they're there for 10 seconds. So there's nothing there of value to them. And then you have pages where they're there for two and a half minutes, which, if you count out two and a half minutes looking at a webpage, that's a long time. You don't look at webpages that long, generally ever. I don't, but I have short attention span.
Jeff, with that amount of traffic on our site, is there a way for people to leave a comment saying what they found interesting, or what they took the time to go visit, or what attracted them to that site? Is there a way to track this somehow?
I can see the site they come into. I can see every site they look at, and I can see every page they leave from. I can see what they searched to get to us. All that stuff is available.
But we do not know what the result is at the end, of course.
But I can't say I knew exactly what Maggie Cronin did on the website. I don't know that. But I know that some North American searched this on Google, got to the site, went to this, this, and this page, and left from this page. I know those flow-through type of things.
Yeah, I just was trying to see if there was a way to determine the positive impact from their visitation.
Right. I decipher some of that by looking at the page views of specific pages and how long people are on them. That tells me some things, but it doesn't tell me intangibles, whether they thought it was nice or laid out well, or they were looking for this and didn't find this. I don't know that, aside from setting up some kind of live blog type idea. That's not something you see very often on pages either. It's not a really common feature, but something that can be looked at. But I'll show you some of those demographic numbers. And this is a little bit hard to see. This shows us in 2013, we had 29,205 visits to the town website. So you start breaking that down by day. Oh, by the way, see this great big spike right here? Does anybody want to take a guess what day that was?
Election.
It was the day after the election.
In October?
That was the day following the election. We actually crashed the sun. And, yeah, it crashed that evening. So I was looking at that one, what the heck was going on. But that's what that was.
You're interested in...
And what was the other one?
That one I don't know for sure. I don't remember.
That was, I think that was either Sauce or the Snow.
Oh, okay.
They both drove a lot.
Oh, yeah, 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 Sauce.
Okay.
So Marcus.
When they brought all the pizza.
So we see 29,000 visits on the page, almost 80,000 page views. So you go to the Town of Carstens page, you were just logged as a visitor, so you add it to that 29,000. Then once you're there, depending on how many pages you go and look through, you're starting to tick up that number of pages. So about 80,000 page views, 2.7 pages per visit. So somebody comes to the site, they're going to the front page usually, that's the biggest entry point, obviously, and then they're going through a couple more pages after that, staying about three minutes per time. So those are the key things we look at. And they're pretty good numbers as far as website numbers go. Now, the one thing that brings down our visit duration, our number of pages, is we refer so much traffic from Facebook just to a specific page on the website. And that's fine. We know we do have. We go on Facebook and say, here's a notice, click the link, it takes them to a specific page on the town website. They read it and they leave. So it's a short time on one page. It's fun. It's the nature of our site. I'm not upset about that. But it brings down our average duration and number of pages visited, but they're well-used pages.
Jeff, Mayor Cronin was asking about, you know, a place for comments. I'm wondering, on the website, is there also a link back to the Facebook page?
There's an icon in the top right-hand corner that you can go, it'll take you back to the town Facebook.
That's what I was wondering, because that would be a way to make comments.
That's still there, isn't it, Graham?
You know, from the website to the town's Facebook.
Which we don't see that very much. We don't see the traffic going the other way. We don't see people who've gone to the website and then come to Facebook to make a comment.
Oh, okay.
The website, well, obviously, Facebook has a lot more dynamic information than the website. So we see people checking Facebook first, and then for any bulk of information, we're sending them to the website to dig down a little deeper. That would be a huge proportion. I mean, in the 90-ish percentages of the traffic flow, Facebook's a huge referrer to the website for us.
It wouldn't be a bad idea, though, to have a comment box on that webpage, suggestion box, and things that might think that the community could offer, and it's a good way of getting, you know, ideas of things that we can do for the community to make it a better place for tourism or...
Is that just a duplicate of what we get?
On the Facebook, that's why I asked about a link.
I don't know. Because like you said, if you're not going back to the Facebook site, and they're looking on that, and they're thinking, I wonder why the town doesn't do this. Well, they're not going to go back to Facebook and make the comment, say it. But they would do it right there if the comment box was there.
Would you like to be the comment?
Yeah, I mean, it's simple.
We have the ability for people to, there's a little link in the top right-hand corner where they can report something, so they can click on that and fill out a field and tell us what they think about it.
You get a little use for it.
But we don't get part of the end. We really get very little to none. And then, obviously, most, all of our email addresses are on there as well, but not at every page. You have to drill down and find it. It's not common on webpages to have something like that, but it's not to say it couldn't be done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or could you just put a little box, was this page helpful?
Yeah, there is that. Yeah, you can see that. Okay. Last, and this one's pretty hard to see unless you're on your devices. But what I wanted to show is this page shows me essentially the pages that are most visited and what they're doing on those pages. And I know you can't read it very well, but let me just point out, so the homepage of our 78,000 page views, the homepage is obviously the main one, because that's where we refer to all the Facebook traffic. That's where the events are, that's where the news and notices are. We tried to make everything on the front page very quick and convenient. That was the intent of it. But the next two, so 9,770, so 16,800 of those pages are the visit pages. Those are the next two most viewed pages on the town site, is the two visit pages. Then there's news, town hall, departments, residents, and then events, businesses, another events one, contact us, another visit one with 1,500. So we know that as much as, we know the town website is a key tool for giving visitors information as well. And it's, aside from the main page of the town, it's the most visited section of the website, by a launch-up, too, by a wide margin. So people are spending good time on there, they're getting a lot of information on there. I just want to point that out as part of the tourism report, that our town website plays a key role in the visitation and what information people are giving for that. So that's everything I have.
Thanks, Jeff.
That's good.
Nice.
Okay, item eight. We are coming up rapidly on our strategic planning workshop, Friday. Just coming up Friday. This is the agenda, so this is just basically for your information. I was told that these guys are probably going to be pretty good at keeping us on track time-wise. So when they say that we'll be out of there at 8:30 Friday night, we can expect we'll probably be out of there at 8:30 Friday night. So, did anybody have any comments they want to make?
I just want to add that Jeff sent us all an email with the different type of documents that we could review before that. That could be useful to our discussion.
Yeah, if you check in your email there, he's specifically noted the previous stuff that was inside of the binders that we were handed.
And the municipal development plan.
Yeah.
And the visitation.
So especially for those of us who are new to council, that will probably be some valuable reading for us to have done before we get there.
Just one note, we'll have dinner at 5:00 on Friday here, and breakfast at 8:30. So come a half an hour before we're supposed to start the sessions.
Okay.
So Friday night at 5:00, we'll do dinner. And then, again, just light breakfast on Saturday, and lots of pastries and fruit, nothing major.
So you want us here at 4:30 on Friday?
Five o'clock, we'll be fine. Yeah, we're just going to do almost a working dinner. We're just bringing in Chinese food, and we'll sit up here and have it, and they can even get going if we need to.
And then Saturday is?
Well, 8:30, if you want to come in a little early.
Actually, okay, that is eight.
Eight-thirty is start time, yeah.
Eight-thirty, so what time should we come, eight, or?
Yeah.
Well, you can come, seven and then start at nine.
Sorry, nine o'clock is start time.
Oh, eight-thirty, eight-thirty is when we can come.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And then, just to clarify, the council's going to be there, you and Marion?
Yeah.
Is there...
That's it.
That's it.
Yeah.
So we don't have economic development, bring in a couple of people or anything?
No, not this really operating power.
This is just us to work our way through how we see things.
And you know, if I could, from an administrative point of view, and Council Bangery is probably the only one here that could really speak to this, these sessions used to be a lot more intense. We used to hole up in a hotel for two days and not leave, and bring in all number of people.
Full days.
Yeah, I mean, it was all day Friday, all day, and we went till late, and then we went in early Saturday all day. And we brought in the RCMP, we brought in the form, and we brought in people all the time. And then the previous council wanted to go to something just a little different, and to stay here. And so it's just a little different. We may want to have some discussion after about, is it enough for a couple of three-hour sessions? I'm a little bit concerned if it is, but I hope it is.
That was my immediate concern, is I don't feel it's going to be long enough to cover the information.
Right. So we're going to have to debrief on that, man down, tucked away in the hotel for two straight days, like we used to. And maybe this, oh, sorry.
No, I just want to reflect, you know, a similar view. I mean, we had this group, you know, facilitate our platform last year, and they're good. And there's always an advantage of having a structure, because it does cause some productivity, but it, at the same time, limits you in what you can discuss, because, you know, you kind of follow their plan. And there was some things that I kind of intimated there before the meeting today that I would like to see us do, and I'm not sure how well it'll fit into their agenda. So, you know, I have a little similar concern that we might not be addressing everything that we really would like to address.
Council Peabody?
Yeah, I was just going to say, it might be sufficient for brainstorming, but maybe not like implementation plans, so.
I think after we have this planning meeting, then the mayor needs to look at maybe holding another meeting specifically to address the issues of what we as council...
Come out of there?
Yeah, come out of there, if we felt it was long enough, if we felt we covered enough materials, you know, because this is strategic planning, and that's pretty important.
Important stuff. It lays the foundation for everything.
Exactly.
Oh, I agree. Okay. Item number nine, this is a bulletin that was sent out regarding the Elections Act specifically, and the reporting requirements.
Will you report that $200,000 you got?
Yeah. I'd love to report something like that.
I personally don't think that it applies to the US.
Ninety-nine point nine percent of it won't. My understanding is, is there is one section in there that if we are, at the next election, that we will be required to file some form on campaign finance. You might have all zeros on there, but basically, for most of us that are spending less than $10,000.
It's not relevant.
It's not relevant.
And you're all considered self-funded, under Section 147-11.
Right.
Where you're all self-funded and not taking in any third-party dollars. I mean, I can't speak for all of you in that, but I'm making an assumption.
Probably a pretty wise assumption.
We put it in there because they're trying to make some pretty, they're trying to make a lot of changes to how campaign finances are tracked and reported because of issues in the larger centers. But I wouldn't get worried about the paperwork involved for the Carstens election, just too much just yet.
I think really it applies to people in bigger centers, Lethbridge, Calgary, and where there might be some corporate funding.
Oh, Calgary comes with big funding.
Yeah, and if you have two terms...
It's an expensive place to get to.
Exactly.
If you have two terms, you have to clear your debt.
Just from some of the things that I've seen coming through from some other sources, eventually I can see what we're going to have to be filling out.
Yeah, but I mean, a zero would be just fine.
But it won't be too onerous on us, because there's not that much that we're going to have to report, unless you're Counselor Edmondson, spending eight bucks.
That's too bad that your income tax couldn't take care of that.
Yeah. So, okay, that is all of our items. We have one motion left that we need.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Edmond, all in favor?
All in favor. I don't think we need to go on a drill, but we did now, it's done.
Jeff, Noel contacted the three of us on...